[S01]...
Recording in progress.
Hey.
Hey.
How you doing? Not too bad, with the snow being...
Yeah.
You know all our denials again, we're back at it.
I know.
Another five months of winter, day one.
Recording stopped.
I know. I was just doing that, snowing off, and being just five weeks, but...
Right, right.
I'm trying to get out the weekend, if Regina may be, but.
She might be.
I, I haven't heard from her.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get out the weekend, if Regina may be, but.
She might be.
I, I haven't heard from her. Yeah.
I'm hoping along on the. Goodness, everybody.
Like to call to order the planning commission meeting number of November fourteenth. First, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united. Indiscernible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the agenda. Are we have to approve the minutes from last week yet, or first the agenda, I'm sorry.
So first the agenda review and adoption, and if we can just add public comment right before the minutes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Agenda approved. Comment.
Call for a vote.
Sorry, yeah, thank you. Call for a vote to approve the agenda. All, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passed. And you want to add the public comment right now before, for.
Before the minutes.
Minutes?
Yep.
Okay, and public comment.
Yes, for essentially item four will be public comment, we'll shift the rest down one, so. We have our public comment ready.
Nate's doing that to accommodate me.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, normally, we have, even in the EDA meeting and CVP, we have a public comments where somebody can come in and say what their piece. So I just, I wanted to interrupt because I thought there was going to be a public comment section. Go on, Adam, congratulations. Since Adam is now a new council member and Bob's on the council, there'll be some changes to the planning commission. I know Gina's, term is up, I haven't spoken to her, I've spoken to Adam already. There'll be a little shuffle, I'll let you guys all know what's going on. Just a little heads up on, there's going to be some shifting of people and bodies around here, okay? Thank you for your service, keep it up, it's good work, and if you ever want to reach out, you know, you know where to get ahold of me, okay?
So, is Bob, you're still on the, okay.
So not a shuffle with Bob, though? We have two counselors, so.
Correct. So, so Adam's going to be gone.
That's kind, that's kind of up to Bob and Adam and we have a conversation.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
You don't get to tell me what to do. You're not my wife, you're not.
I'm not going to be there for another term.
Okay.
I'm going to take a little bit of time with my several very young kids. Feeling a little under pressure. No, well, just three.
Just.
But they're so young that I'm kind of feeling this strain, so I want to take maybe one term off and then see if I'll be joining in a couple years.
We'll miss you, Ann.
Thanks.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thanks, Ann.
She's represented both township and city very well. So, the other question is if you have somebody in mind or, or somebody that has an interest in this board commission, by all means, get ahold of me. Again, we're kind of shuffling the deck, I know there'll be some changes on the CVP board, I expect there'll be some changes on the park board as well, so. Thank you all very much and.
How about this, Martin? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next item is the approve the minutes from October tenth.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item is new business. It is for amendment request for, to add gyms indoor athletic facilities in the I-1 district.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So staff first received an ordinance amendment request to allow gyms and athletic facilities within a I-1 light industrial district. Staff has worked with the applicant on this request and helped direct them to this plan of action to facilitate their intended use. Right now, it's pretty common across, not just, I would say, our region, but across the state to allow this type of use in an industrial area. You'll see oftentimes, sometimes there's adoptive reuse projects where a person may purchase a industrial building and remodel it into a gym. Also with new construction, these are more and more common in those areas. So staff sees the amendment as a good fit, both in the short term and long term, to help facilitate this use. We don't see much conflict with this use in comparison to our other allowable uses in the industrial district. And just keeping in mind our comprehensive plan, we do have a goal in there that focuses on reviewing our land use and zoning standards, just to make sure that they're relevant and current. And this helps fit that need in the sense of creating more flexibility for new opportunities like this use out in our industrial area. So with that, we do have a public hearing as part of a amendment, and then we would ask for a motion on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment document. I'd be happy to answer questions, we do have the applicant here as well, so she can shed some light or help answer some questions as well, if there are any.
I had reviewed all the documents before the meeting that you sent to us, and I didn't necessarily have any questions with the paperwork that was provided to us. I'd appreciate if she'd like to say anything that she'd like to say this evening.
Yeah, so you're currently at Wake Park, Minnesota.
And Amy, could you go to the podium? I'm sorry, just so we can capture it. Yep.
Hello, so we are currently in Wake Park, Minnesota. And we're looking at building a new gym, hopefully in St. Joe. We have about four hundred families that come through each week, and we think that would help the city of St. Joe to just bring new people in, so. Do you have any questions?
I got one.
Yeah?
Is this going to be a franchise thing, or is this a?
Nope, so we.
Basically a moving way park to St. Joe, a new facility.
Correct, yep, we've been in business for a little over fifteen years now, so. Yep, just, just my husband and I own a gym, so.
Okay.
Well, procedural wise, are either we close the public hearing, you know?
Yeah, technically, we need to open the public hearing. Yep. So.
We opened it, and now it's closed.
I'll go ahead and move to approve with this, set this forth, uh, order to the council for final approval.
Now, second then.
I do have a, a question. This covers like the, uh, the other fitness type gyms, like the, what do you know what I'm talking about?
Like Stayfit or like.
What's that one that great, CrossFit? Like CrossFit, that'll cover that?
Correct, yeah.
So we don't have to like go through that process just in case?
Yep, we, and we kind of structured it where it's, it's, yeah, it's gyms slash indoor athletic facilities to allow some flexibility with whether it's gymnastics or whether it's CrossFit and similar nature.
And then I just, this is a little bit on the off topic of the gyms and indoor athletic facilities, but do we wait until someone proposes an idea? Or one of the things that I was thinking about is, and I've seen is where they have weekend occasional stores as well that they have at like, in a, in a warehouse as retail. But it's not open like all the time.
Like a pop-up type of thing?
Kind of, yeah, that people are, it, it seems like that's been real popular, I just. Kind of, yeah, that people are, it seems like that's been real popular, I'm just curious of, do we, at that time, do we just take those types of things as they come up? Or is it not?
Yeah, so it really depends, I would say if staff's pushing it forward, it's because there's a quantity of requests or there's a, staff has identified specifically a potential need to amend the ordinance. Otherwise, for requests like this, we, yeah, we have the applicant put forth the application and are pretty honest with the applicant on what our staff and the perspectives that staff has as part of that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a question.
Yeah, and the pop-ups, so if someone were to do a pop-up in like an industrial area and it's retail, there'd probably be a conflict with the zoning. So since we don't allow necessary retail in industrial areas, so we, we work through that and kind of go from there.
Okay. Well, it looks like there was motion and a second to approve, that would be. Let's see, is that the ordinance?
So right?
Five oh two?
Yeah, right now, we labeled it twenty twenty-two TBD.
TBD, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Thank you.
Next item is old business regarding the cannabis and zoning we've been talking about.
Yes, thank you, so at the last meeting, the commission, we've discussed this a few, few times now, right? So the commission discussed at the October meeting essentially directing staff to allow cannabinoid product sales in the B one, B two area while utilizing a five hundred foot buffer from other establishments and a thousand foot buffer from schools and public parks. Staff's done a little bit more research on this since that time, specifically on what other cities are doing as part of this, and that's outlined in your packet, but just to highlight some of that, Wake Park does allow, but does not have any buffer limits. Stock Rapids does not have any formal amendments in place to their ordinance, they just follow the state law and allow the sale outright. Sartell does not have anything adopted, as they're still drafting ordinance language and trying to determine zoning. And then St. Cloud allows in their commercial districts, but they do have buffers from other establishments and from parks and places of worship. So one of the bigger changes that you'll note, and I included this in the packet as a more or less a reference document, is the revised drafted language tied to the licensing and sale of products like this. So of specific note is just the elimination of the youth oriented facilities and the different buffer references in that drafted document. So some commissions or some questions for the commission as we try to move some things forward here are, is the previous buffers that we had talked about and discussed still consensus? And specifically on this one, should a retail establishment that sells products along with other products be treated differently than a place that just focuses solely on cannabinoid product sales? So when you look at zoning and kind of the purpose of zoning, zoning is really meant to focus on how a property is used, not necessarily the products within that establishment. So when we look at certain things, like if someone were to want to do a standalone dispensary where they just sell these products, we'd probably treat that differently and probably have it where zoning would probably come into play more so versus when the product is just sold at like a convenience store. That's where the licensing and the regulation of the product comes in. With the draft of the licensing of the product right now, essentially, they'd have to keep that product behind the counter. Folks would have to show I D to obtain that product. So I kind of want to get the commission's thoughts again on some of this. There's a couple of ways we could go about it, and right now, if we didn't draw, adopt zoning regulations, then the product would essentially be regulated through that licensing ordinance document. If someone were to do a, or want to do like a dispensary of just selling these products, and we didn't have anything in our zoning ordinance, we would essentially say that it, that wouldn't be allowed, and they'd have to come forth with a zoning amendment request to allow. So there's kind of that, that two facets again with, should the, should we look at this? Should zoning be involved when we're talking about a specific product that's essentially a retail product within a commercial area? Or should zoning step into focus more if we have a dispensary that's just selling this product? Because then it's focusing on that use versus focusing on the product itself. So I just want to kind of throw that out there and, and see. I know we had a great discussion last month and previous months, but kind of want to paint the picture a little bit. Maybe I made it more gray, but. Yeah.
Looking at like the buffers that some other places have in place, like the city of St. Cloud, Stock Rapids having none. It, and the maps that you provide for like the city of St. Joseph with our first proposed thousand foot buffer, it looks a little aggressive. I think we should either remove the buffer completely, similar to Stock Rapids, and just abide by state law, considering there's enough laws and ordinances on the books per the state, or at least reduce our thousand foot buffer to something smaller that allow for more businesses to potentially be in the commercial district like the downtown area of St. Joseph, whether that's the three hundred and fifty that St. Cloud has, or since they're at a much greater area than we are, having seventy thousand people for a population versus maybe our seven thousand people with the students included. So I think we should reevaluate the buffer size for sure.
One thing that has come up as we've tried to let this kind of marinate a little bit more is if you did have a buffer in place and it's specifically aimed towards any establishment that sells this product. If you have a request, then say like a chiropractic place wants to offer this, and then say that like the market wants to offer this, or QuickTrip. If we have a buffer between different establishments or even from schools or that, it can be essentially first come, first served, especially when it's from different establishments, right? So is that fair to have that buffer if it's a buffer tied to the product itself? Or is it more important to have that buffer when it's, the sole use is just a store that sells those products? You know, you think about it like a tobacco store or a liquor store, right? You don't necessarily want a cluster of tobacco or liquor stores probably in a downtown area, you might want to have some buffer, maybe you do. But that use looks different than a convenience store that may sell beer or cigarettes. You get, get what I'm saying a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
I agree with you that it does seem a little arbitrary and odd for it to be essentially first come, first gets, first gives, if you have the buffer for anyone who ends up offering this product. So if it's appropriate, I think it seems more fitting on the, the uses where that, like the dispensary you described, where it's the main use.
And I would say if hypothetically, if there's no buffers that are adopted and we don't elect to institute zoning, but it's regulated just through that licensing regulation, if someone were to request or come forward and want to do like a dispensary, then we would flag it and say, well, that's not permitted, so you would have to request a zoning amendment where we would then, they would, same thing that Amy has done in the sense of putting forth the application to allow that dispensary in whatever zoning district they are wanting it.
So like any, any retail store, QuickTrip market or whatever, they would still have to go through the licensing process in order to be able to sell that? So it would really be regulated by that then versus the zoning?
Correct, correct, and there's safeguards in that in the sense that the product would be kept behind the counter. If folks are purchasing, they would have to show their I D. So there are safeguards, so youth couldn't just walk in there and grab it off the shelf.
Nate, is there, is there anything to stop an existing business, like say QuickTrip, from adding this to their? Right, there's no process where the city could interject themselves, right?
No, no, so yeah, it, it's really following that state law since it's been legalized. We have the right to adopt the regulation of the license, same, similar to tobacco, liquor, but we can't necessarily prevent them.
Can't stop them, we would just have, they would have to go through the licensing process, follow the rules for licensing and then.
Correct, correct.
Not putting it into zoning, it seems like a Minnesota passive aggressive way to make it not permissible for just that window of time until some future applicant brings the zoning request to the planning commission. I mean, this is kind of meaningless really, but leaving it out just means that the first applicant would have an ahead step. Bringing forth the order, right?
Correct, yeah, especially if you're talking about just that dispensary type of use. They would have to put that forward and then go through that. So as it speaks right now, we want to allow dispensary. Even if this, the licensing component gets adopted, we still, per zoning, since it's not listed as allowable use, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be allowed. So we're regulating the use and not the product, and that's really where zoning, I would say, comes in, is focusing on the use of the property, not products itself.
So if we choose to follow state law, period, and nothing else attached to it, it could, it's not regulated at all? Anybody and everybody can, whatever.
It's just regulated through our licensing process. Yep, so they'd have to keep it behind counter, all those things, and that's how we would.
Is that what state law reads?
Yeah, so state law essentially allows the city to adopt.
Allows the city to, but if we sit back and do nothing and just adjust our, just say, okay, the state law dictates what?
Yeah, then the state.
Then we're out of the picture then.
Yeah, so I, I think Stock Rapids, how they did it, since they didn't adopt anything, then those places that sell that product just have to follow the state law, but there's not the step of licensing and regulating within the city. Yeah, so administration and from our conversation still intends to adopt the licensing and regulations so we can have some oversight on it, and then if there are issues, we can revoke licensing, you know, if they're selling to, to minors or whatever, same as the tobacco and the liquor components. So.
But what I'm saying is if we just adopt state law, period, and just follow our authority to, you know, attach certain situations to it, it's, it's wide open.
Yeah, yeah, so if we did nothing, if we didn't adopt any license regulations, nothing, then it would just follow under state law, yeah.
So that, you're saying then that you could have these, someone can get a license and as long as it's within a business district? Or it has to be in a business or be in your house?
No, they just, they just need a license, so they would still have to, yeah, obtain that license and then go through that process of then selling.
At the state level.
But then is there, but is there, I mean, a person can't get a liquor license to sell liquor out of their house, can they?
No, no, so.
That's, I mean, that's, what's the license right now that, is it still maintained in a certain?
Yeah, so it'd have to be like a commercial establishment. Yep, yeah, so residential, yeah, that went to.
They have to have an actual business where you're walking into and?
Yep, and we have regulations within our residential districts to prohibit certain home occupations and things of that nature, so we, we want to allow that regardless, yeah.
So in the packet here though too, it looks like they did draft some wording for potentially adding this to the B two highway seventy-five district as a permitted use?
So that, that was just language that was carried on from some of our last discussion, so that was, yeah, essentially copied and pasted from last discussion. If we were to go a zoning route.
In that zoning route, would that apply toward only the dispensary type of thing then, rather than just retail sales? Or can you just, can you separate it that way?
If we, so my thoughts are if we were to add something to zoning, we would add it geared towards a dispensary type of use. Yeah, because we wouldn't want to get into, yeah, the regulation of the, yeah.
Volunteering in there, yep.
Yep. So yeah, we've kind of gone back and forth and, and that on how to do this and where it's appropriate for zoning to come into the picture. Yeah.
And was the one you drafted here for the zoning, was that covering a buffer? That discussion? This B two highway?
No, no, so that draft is just going off of previous kind of discussion we had when we were talking about having zoning applied to just in general, the regulation of any cannabinoid products, including, you know, ones that just focus on that and ones that don't focus on that. So I wouldn't get too caught up in that drafted language, it's just carried over from the previous discussion. If we were to have some kind of buffer language or that, then we'd probably insert that into the zoning, although it's kind of goofy because we don't have any other buffer language for other uses within the zoning.
Don't entertain if we do.
Correct, but we have a, a separate section for that that kind of outlines all of that. So, yeah, so I mean, a couple routes, again, we could not adopt anything from a zoning perspective right now and just allow it to be licensed and regulated. And then if someone were to want to do a dispensary, they would have to come forward with that request. Or we, we could insert like a dispensary type of use and then create buffers for that and have that in place already.
I think if people want buffers, that would be smart to do it preemptively, because if you have an applicant bringing forth the, asking for the use to be added to the zone, it seems a little odd in the discussion to insert buffers then, because it's going to, the applicant, I mean, the applicant is going to take those buffers as aimed at them, created to deny them, et cetera. So if you want buffers, it would behoove us to have them on paper before an applicant brings ideas.
Because if you were, if you were a, like, a smart applicant, you'd be applying right now, where the state law is so vague.
So.
I would suspect the legislature, uh, their new legislature recon, uh, meeting in January would probably clarify this.
Yeah, so there probably would be some legislation changes, so, yeah, so typically, you'd want to try to address that beforehand. The only thing or caveat to that is we don't have to allow those dispensaries that just focus on the sale of those products per se.
Right now, we don't allow it.
Yeah, so right now, we don't allow it, so if we were to change the ordinance, we'd be allowing it with those buffers. Now, if we had a idea and if we wanted to still have buffers, we can still have that recommendation, so if someone were to come forward and apply for that, we still would have some basis on what we would do for buffers in that instance.
No, they could apply right now, but we don't have a zoning area for them.
Yeah, we have a moratorium, so they, yeah, they got to wait. Yeah, we have a moratorium, so they, yeah, they gotta wait, yeah.
We have a buffer on alcohol, liquor, or tobacco, I mean, excuse me, like, do we have a buffer on anything, no, right, currently, other than adult entertainment, right? Do you want to say, something on that?
No, it's categorized separately.
Yeah.
We don't have any tobacco specifically stores.
So right, yeah, yeah, and, and right now, we don't call out tobacco shops specifically within the ordinance. So if someone were to request a standalone tobacco shop, we'd probably have to look at some kind of a amendment, I believe, on the proper zoning district for that.
Basically the same scenario as this.
Yeah, yeah.
So is there a, a restriction on the quantity? So, like you were saying, you don't have some grouping? That was in there?
Yeah, that's all on the state.
Yeah, so the state has, um, so many milligrams is allowable per sale, um, I forget what the.
I meant like if, for establishments, so like you can't have two next to each other, like.
She's saying distance-wise, so like two stores can't sell the same product within a certain distance.
So if it's a.
Like stores next to each other, like, can you have like two, three down the street right next to each other, that's what I mean.
So, so for instance, like if two QuickTrips are right next to one another, they both wanted to sell the product, then no, there, we, we don't have the, the buffer for that. So that's kind of, going back to the earlier question of, if we did have a buffer that focused on stores that sell that product in addition to other products, is that really fair or a question if that's legal? Cause then that's the first QuickTrip that turns in their application to sell that. I think the buffer kind of comes into play when it's that dispensary type of use. So you don't get a cluster of dispensaries in a zoning district.
So for this evening, what's the specific action that's requested of us?
So, I am just looking for just direction on the zoning element. Is the commission okay with, um, if we just handled it through the license and, um, regulation of the product and didn't adopt zoning regulations, or if we adopt zoning regulations? Should we have any buffer, should we define a dispensary and put that in there now, or should we not? And then they would have to come forward with that request.
You're using the word dispensary, are you talking machine or are you talking?
Yeah, and I don't know if dispensary is the right word per se, I'm, I, I, it's the first thing that pops in my head when I think of a shop that just sells these products. So I, whether you call it a dispensary or, yeah.
You're looking at a horrified head shop.
What's?
Back in my day.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah.
I believe dispensary is the term that like a lot of other states use, so it's not like a manufacturing production facility. It would just be a shop where that's their primary product of sale.
So how does that tie into what you were saying, Anne, about the, the putting something in about the buffer?
I just meant that.
If we're gonna.
If the commission wants to have zoning language of where it belongs and have buffer language, then we should put it in our zoning now with buffer language because it's a, sliding, it's a bit more awkward once you're dealing with an applicant who's asking for the use to be allowed, and now you're trying to interject buffer language, which they're gonna maybe take personally if it affects their property choices.
For a dispensary.
Yeah, yes, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
I mean, there is merit to that because it's gonna happen, right? It's still legal, it, it's most likely going to happen. Somebody's gonna want to bring it in here, so if we are, I mean, it doesn't have to happen tonight, I don't suppose, but if it, being preemptive on it, it's probably a better.
So, let me ask this question, so the buffers that we had already talked about, um, from the last month with the five hundred buffer from other establishments and a thousand radius from schools and public parks, would that still be a appropriate buffer for like a dispensary? Cause we can have that as like a recommendation, um.
I believe even that's too aggressive for a dispensary.
Okay.
Because the maps that you've provided to us, it, uh, just based on like the church, the parks and different things, if those were imaginarily locations of a dispensary that want to come into town, you're like eliminating the entire city with one or two businesses.
Yeah, thousand foot buffer from every park, doesn't that pretty much take up the whole town?
Yeah.
The other thing that's kind of tricky with this too is if we did update the ordinance to insert dispensaries and then have a, a buffer, there may be legislation that, that changes, right? There may be different things that come up, so then we have to reamend that. So that's kind of where the thoughts are, if we are, are silent on that right now, then it's not allowed for dispensaries. And then we kind of, you know, wait and see how things go, but if things do come up, then that's where we have that buffer language to fall back on per recommendation. So, what staff can do is we can look at other kind of buffers, if it's a less buffer, um, you know, and maybe next month get some direction on that to help be proactive if we do get applicants for a dispensary, that we have something to fall back, does that make sense? Okay.
I would be okay with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Saint Cloud's buffer language is different thing, I don't know how they came up with this number, one thousand three hundred and twenty feet from schools and three hundred and fifty feet from parks and places of worship.
One thousand three hundred and twenty would be the loose approximation of a quarter mile.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, and the three fifty is the standard public hearing notice distance, so. I, I think it's the two buffers that they have for other things, but yeah. Interesting. Okay, um, so, yeah, I mean, staff can look at other potential buffers, lesser distances and that, and if we can maybe get some direction on that, we can be proactive in, if we get a dispensary. But if we stay silent right now and we won't allow dispensaries, but they can have, you know, your QuickTrips and other places can sell the, the product as long as it goes through our license and our regulation process.
I think that makes sense to me for now to.
Okay.
I agree.
Consent, okay, sounds like consensus on that then, okay.
The other business item, we don't, you don't need any motion on any of that, right? No, just.
No, as long as I got consensus for good, yeah.
Uh, their business, twenty twenty-three planning commission schedule.
Yeah, so kind of early on this, but I wanted to just bring this forward. So typically we'll approve the schedule for the next year at like December meeting. But just given that the next meeting's already December and then January, we're getting things on February, I just kind of want to square away the meetings and then the deadlines so we can get that to applicants and stuff. So typically the deadlines for applications are three weeks from the meeting. As far as I know, all the meetings for planning commission next year, um, none of them fall on holidays, so it would just be the, as normal, second Tuesday, um, so, or Tuesday, I'm thinking of council tomorrow already. Yeah, second Monday, so. If we're good with that, then I just, uh, would like a motion on that schedule to adopt that.
I think motion.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion has passed.
The only other business I'll update is we've been getting a lot of industrial park inquiries recently, um, and I think that some of them have some good substance to it, as evidenced by, by one of them this evening. But there's some other ones that I think are moving and shaken, so. Commission may have some other things that will be coming forth in the coming months here.
Is that in the, that's in the newer one, just?
Yeah, yeah, we're Trobexes, yeah, yeah.
Good deal, well, then we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I would say all those in favor?
Do we need to vote to adjourn?
Do we vote to adjourn? All's in favor?
Aye.